Welcome, this is the League of Women Voters Forum. We decided, at least for the primary, we're going to cover the non-partisan races for the city, since there seem to be so many people running and the competition good, and really, a really fine slate of candidates for all those offices. So this is the final forum, although it turns out we're going to have to redo one of the Ward 1 groups. So that's glad you're not going to do this twice, it's just once. So this will wrap up our forums for the primary. And if you have a Facebook page, or you want to help spread the word, we're going to, our Charter of Communication is going to rebroadcast the mayoral, Ward 1, Ward 2, and Ward 3 forums. And the schedule, we have on a little handout, just briefly though, it will be Ward 2 and 3 will be rebroadcast on Channel 192 at 11:00 a.m. on the four consecutive Sundays before the election on August 16th. So if people want to watch, or re-watch, and they'll say, "I can't believe he said that, I want to watch that again," it will be rebroadcast on Channel 192. And Charter of Communications will also post the video online, and so there will be ample opportunity for people to follow what you say tonight. The League of Women Voters, the Cheyenne page of the State League website has voter guides, and I don't know how many of you have participated in that, so you can further find information about the candidates there. I'm sure they have Facebook pages, they will take phone calls, there are many, many ways to find out the candidates. We urge everyone to be informed and vote, and if you want to know how to register, how to vote, where to vote, all that information is available on the Laramie County Clerk's election page, so I encourage you to go there, start there, it's a good place to start, and find out where those vote centers are. You can vote in any of them on Election Day. So that's the good news. And we have, there are eight people running for two available seats in Ward 3, which is the eastern part of Cheyenne, eastern and going a little bit south. Three wards total, two seats open in each ward. You will be voting for two people, four will advance to the general election and be on your ballot there. They are, these men here are running to serve a four-year term on the City Council for $1,000 a month, before taxes. So that is the compensation that the city has for you for some long, hard hours, and we appreciate your running for the office, willing to do that. There are regular meetings, council meetings on the second and third Thursdays, and there, I mean Mondays, I'm sorry, second and fourth Monday evenings. There are committee meetings, finance, public services, committee of the whole, during that, in addition to any other independent research you want to work, and then meeting with your constituents. So, thank you for running, it sounds like a very arduous job, and I'm glad you're throwing your hat in the ring for that. Just a word about the format this evening. What we're going to be doing is giving a minute and a half for introductions, just to tell a little bit about themselves and their campaigns. Then each question will give them a minute and a half, and then open it up for an extra, say, 15 to 30 seconds, if they want to amplify, having heard the other answers, amplify or comment on other questions. And we have six people up here, so we're not going to get through all the questions we had planned, but I think there'll be ample opportunity for you to let the public know who you are, and where your priorities are, and your plans for the future. Then we'll have a minute and a half to close, in general, and that should, that should take us to the end of the evening. And just to introduce everyone, and we'll, Mr. Latham, Mr. Case, Gabriel Pena, Richard McVeigh, Tom Wan, and Joe Shogren are the, are six of the eight candidates running for City Council, Ward 3 specifically. So let's go ahead and start with the opening statement, and we'll just sort of do a round robin on all of this. We'll start with Mr. Latham, you have a minute and a half.
All right, this is the intro?
That's your, introduce yourself, exactly, yeah.
Nigel Dominic Latham, born in Cheyenne, Wyoming, August 21st, 1983, at Memorial Hospital. My mother, Sherri Latham, now Dixon, has worked the same job at Bureau of Land Management since I was nine months old. She could have retired this year, she chose to work four more years. I have a strong ethic of work, because she always had two jobs up until the last two years. I believe that's a hard-working woman, and that was a great direction, and pretty much the tools I needed to know how to do what was necessary when I got old enough, or mature enough, I'll say mature enough, kind of young. Thirty-three years old, well, I will be 33 next month, I'm already claiming it, and I have a three-year-old daughter, one and only child. I recently graduated college, I did start at the age of 19, but I was young and wanted to experience life, and came back to it. I would love to see more safety mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery phases implemented into the city, law enforcement, first responders, as well as ISAC, which is information sharing and confidentiality for emergency telecommunications in emergency or risk situations of disaster.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Case.
Yeah, good evening, and I really appreciate you guys taking the time to put this forum on to get to know all the candidates here. Again, my name is Rocky Case, I'm a lifelong resident of Cheyenne, I've got a great passion for this community, I've seen it over 42 years, go through a lot of ups and a lot of downs, and I would like to be a part of putting this community back on a trajectory of ups, if you will. I have a degree in political science with a minor in history, that has kind of given me the ability to analyze a lot of particulars on what causes issues to bubble up to the surface, and then come up with solutions for those issues as well. In terms of my background, I've had, over the last 16 years, the opportunity to work for two multinational corporations, where I have had to manage budgets, I've had to manage people, hire, fire, make decisions along those lines. And I've also got a background in project management, if you will, I worked for a plastic manufacturer, we worked with a host of large installations, commercial aquariums, sculpture projects, things like this. Graduate of leadership Cheyenne, I believe I'd have to double-check the year 2006, which gave me a broad perspective of what goes on in the community. I, that's kind of a brief summary, I look forward to any questions that you guys have to address us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pena.
Thank you, Marguerite, and thank you for doing this. My name is Gabriel Pena, and I'm running for Ward 3. I am not a lifetime resident of Cheyenne, I just moved here in June of 2014, but I dove in really quick. I own my own business downtown, and since moving here, I have tripled my business. Before, I went into business for myself 10 years ago, I was an HR manager for a sheet metal aerospace shop in San Diego, California. I have a business, Bachelor's of Science degree in Business Operations Management. I currently serve as a DDA Board Member. I also serve as the President of the Downtown Cheyenne Business Co-op, which I founded last year to help small business owners network and receive education to help them grow their small businesses here in this community. I really enjoy Cheyenne, I chose to live here, and I just want to see it become a great city, and really help take it to the next level. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McVeigh.
Hello, my name is Rich McVeigh, I'm a candidate also for Ward 3 City Council. I too am a lifelong resident of Cheyenne, Wyoming, I've been here 60, well, it'll be 62 years, my birthday is one day behind yours, and I'll be 62 next month. I've, I've had the opportunity to see Cheyenne at its greatest when I was younger, what have you, and I remember what the downtown was like, I remember the vibrancy, I remember a lot of things about, just, just the growing up of it, and just finding out that Cheyenne was just a wonderful place to live, it is a wonderful place to be from, I'm very proud to be from Cheyenne, Wyoming. I too am a graduate from the University of Wyoming, I've got a Bachelor of Science degree in agricultural business and economics. I would like to see Cheyenne return to what it was, and I would love to see the downtown grow, redevelop, and become what it was back when I was younger. And I would also like to see Cheyenne grow into the future, become an economic center, and I would like to see more new business come to Cheyenne.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wan.
Good evening, thank you. My name's Tom Wan, I'm also running for Ward 3 of City Council. I have been a military veteran for 11 years, my last seven years were here at the Cheyenne Medical Command Unit, where I was a laboratory technician. I have three degrees, the last two are in technology, and I currently work as Assistant Administrator for Blue Cross Blue Shield of Wyoming. So I do understand technology, I know, also know six programming languages that have helped me do my job and try to make it more efficient and cost-effective. What I strive to focus on during my time in City Council would be to expansion of, expand the greenway, update some of the city codes, and help encourage property owners to reduce unnecessary water usage with zero-scaping, and/or having their own vegetable gardens, along with chickens, that the ordinance was passed recently, and kind of get back to being pioneers of what Wyoming is kind of known for, of being self-reliant and self-sufficient, and not have to overuse current resources. Along with that, encouraging people to live healthier lifestyles, with the way that the health insurance industry is changing, is trying to promote wellness and being active when you're young, so that you don't have to spend all this money on your healthcare when you're older. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shogren.
Hi, I'm Joe Shogren, I got two kiddos, I got a 13-year-old and a 19-year-old, they're one of the biggest reasons why I'm running for City Council, I'd like to make sure Cheyenne is a good place for them to grow up, and to have a future in. I'm a high-voltage lineman, I work for High West Energy. I believe team-building has pretty much got me as far as I am in my career today, because one of my biggest strengths is team-building, and I team-build every time I go to work with my crew. Communication is a key, and so far, I feel like we have a lot of stops between City Council, the citizens of Cheyenne, and the citizens versus the employees, the council versus the employees. I feel we have to get rid of these stops, I feel communication is a key, and I feel like we need to grow our communication, and work together as one, or one city, we need to grow as one city. We can't bicker and fight over the small things, we got to get through and tackle the meat and potatoes of what Cheyenne needs. That's one reason why I'm running for, running for City Council, because I feel that the meat and potatoes have been kind of neglected the last little bit. So I'd like to bring Cheyenne back to a main course of working together, and getting some progress out of our City Council and City Government. I believe I am the guy for this job, because I'm a great communicator, and I can work with people, I can work with anybody, I can bring together any group we need to. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll start, our questions again, one and a half minutes, we'll start with Mr. Case. This is a question I've been starting out with, both the mayoral and the council candidates, just getting your perspective on this. Cheyenne has the largest and most complex municipal government in the state. Meanwhile, we heard comments during the city administrator debate last fall about the power of the mayor's office to affect and restrict council's access to information and decision-making, that's that strong mayor form of government. What is the proper balance of power between the council and the mayor's office? And since we're electing a new mayor, what kind of mayor would you like to see elected in the office, and especially if you get elected as council member, what kind of mayor's office would you like to work with?
Yeah, great questions, and I think two words in that question resonate really, really well, large and complex, and I don't think that those are things government should not be, plain and simply. In terms of what kind of mayor should we look for in this community, somebody that's going to have a long-term vision, in terms of what this community is going to become. I feel that, over the last couple decades, Cheyenne has worked hodgepodge, piecemeal, if you will, with no long-term plan, and Del Range is a perfect example of what happens with, with there is no long-term plan, the traffic on that is horrendous. No turn cuts, no three lanes, things that should have been planned, Del Range can't handle it. And I'm kind of answering this question backwards, if you will, from B to, or from CB, and the first part of the question again was...
Well, it was, it starts with the whole idea of the complaints that really arose during the city administrator about how, and mayors have different styles, you won't get told for this, but you know, mayors can have a whole bunch of different styles, Mayor Pando was one style, what would you like to see, especially vis-à-vis the council?
Yeah, I think that the mayor and the, and the City Council need to collaborate together, instead of working against one another. If the mayor's withholding information, that's a real big problem. I think one of the big things that I want to happen, when I'm on council, is break down barriers and work across boundaries. And that, that transcends to the departments as well. One of the things that I've been trying to look at is, what does it take for a, for a business to get from breaking ground to opening, and the complexities that are in place? And I think a lot of businesses pass over Cheyenne because of those complexities.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pena.
Can you repeat the question?
Absolutely. Cheyenne, Cheyenne has the largest, most complex municipal government in the state. Meanwhile, we heard comments during the city administrator debate last fall about the power and authority of the mayor's office to affect the council's access to information and decision-making. Some people were complaining that they were not brought into the decision-making to the level they wished. What is the proper balance of power between the council and mayor's office? And what kind of mayor would you like to see in the office, and how, especially relating to the council?
Well, first I'm going to talk about the city administrator vote. That was a very poorly-written, very much had too many holes, where there was not enough communication. And I thought, I think it's kind of ironic, because the people that put it together wanted more communication, but yet, when they put it together, they were giving a blank check to the City Council to say, "Hire whoever you want, no matter what pay scale, and we're not going to worry about the logistics of the city administrator." So, and I wrote numerous articles to the editor to really urge people to vote no on that, because it was really poorly-written, and did not have the communication that it needed to have. We need to have a mayor who's going to have an open-door policy. We need to have a mayor who's going to be there for the City Council members, who's going to be there for the staff, who's going to be there for the economic development partners, who's going to be there for the citizens. We need someone who's going to be transparent, and who's going to be really an open book. We need to have somebody who's, who's really going to work together as a team, and have the leadership style that is going to drive everyone towards the common goal.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McVeigh, do you want to hear the question again, or?
I think I've got it. First off, I think the type of mayor that we need is going to have to be a very good communicator, and I think too, that they're going to also have to have the open-door policy. I, I'm very, I'm a transparent-type person, I'm a good listener, and I'm a good, I try to convey what I'm thinking, you know, I clear-communicate myself, and I would like that back, you know, in, in payback from the, from the mayor, the new mayor that's coming in. I do think that we're at a crossroads, and I do think that the future of Cheyenne, right now, is, we, we need a lot of work done in the infrastructure part of it right now, and I think we're going to have to have somebody that's open to suggestions, open to looking into better materials that we need to use. We need to look at the expansion of Cheyenne for the future, not only for us, but for the younger people. I think we've let it go kind of to pot, so to speak, and I think it's time that we start building it back up from the ground up. So I do think the new, new mayor should be a good communicator and open, open with all of us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wan.
Thank you. I'd like to work for a mayor that specializes in open, honest, and effective communication. I also would like to see some separation of their duties, spread out to different council members and/or committees. Need to have, also that effective communication also needs to spread then, to obviously the council, and then the citizens. And I want a mayor that will listen to all the arguments, they can offer their insight and vision, and then can explain themselves and their decisions. I don't mind being told no, I actually really like that word, but I need to know why I'm being told no, because then I can maybe make a better offer of an idea, of a direction to go. Yes is also good, as well, but it can't just be an automatic yes, it has to be an educated, "I'm saying yes, here's why." So be able to explain yourself, and that, be open and honest with everybody.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shogren.
As far as a mayor goes, I definitely want a mayor that's going to be trustworthy and transparent. I want a mayor that will actually work with the City Council, and not be above the City Council. It has to be a joint effort and teamwork, it can't be the mayor, you know, playing Peyton Manning, and the rest of the council playing the bench warmers, or vice versa. We have to work together to help the city, you know, grow and become better. I would like them to be 100% transparent with the council, so we can make the informed decisions we need to make. If they don't actually come forward and give us the information we need, we're going to have a very hard time making the right decision. You know, you can't basically just give somebody a choice and say, "Ah, go out and vote tonight", like what happened with our 2.5% for our employees. You know, you can't do that type of stuff, because if you do, you're going to end yourself up in a bind, you're going to not do exactly what effective leadership needs to do in Cheyenne. So I, on top of that, I believe a driven mayor. We've got a problem with planning in Cheyenne, there is no future plan in Cheyenne. You know, you can point to little things where we've, you know, said, "Oh, we want to do this in the future," but we don't have a five, 10-year, 15-year plan for Cheyenne. So we need to know where we're going, so we have to get a driven mayor that will be willing to work with the council. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Mr. Latham?
Effective communication is very important, in regard to infrastructure. I've heard infrastructure, but there's, the infrastructure, the building, and the infrastructure, the actual operation organization department. Now, both are important, because you, this building is an infrastructure, operating inside of it is an infrastructure. Stove piping can leave important vital information out, especially when it comes to situations like the Virginia college shooting. There was information and knowledge about that guy's suicidal and miscellaneous acts that were not reported to a higher authority because of the FERPA law, which I learned about, like HIPAA with the medical world. Now, because of the teachers afraid of that conflict, they never forwarded that information, which led to that shooting. Years later, we're still seeing things like that, but with more communication, less stove piping, which is only speaking to your superior, or the one below you, inferior. We kind of have to figure out a way to break that barrier, which is why I bring up ISAC again. As well as, as far as a mayor, open-minded individual, that's very knowledgeable in her conduct, his/her conduct.
Okay, thank you, and someone wants to take this opportunity to either expand on their own comment, or comment on what you've heard anyone else say, here's your chance. Done? Okay?
Um, yes, the gov, mayor should be very friendly with the community, as well as the governing body, all working together in unity, sin, sorry, like, checks and balances.
Okay, all right. Well, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Like Latham said, checks and balances, you know, if the mayor is not being transparent and forthcoming with the council, there's no way that we can do what we need to do. So if they're forthcoming with us, I believe that we need to work with them, but I believe, you know, nobody is above the City Council or the City Government, we need to work together, and if we're not, we need to have a discussion.
Very true.
And we need to make this flow well for our citizens.
Okay. All righty. One of the questions I, I've been asking, you know, the Ward, Ward 3 does not include downtown, but there's the thought that downtown is still an engine that affects every part of the city, so I've been talking about it, and the, and sort of perennial topic seems every year after year is, what can we do about downtown to make it a more vital place, to develop the businesses there, to bring in more businesses, et cetera. And I guess the question is, a little, it's sort of practical and philosophical a little bit, which is, what can the city do, what should the city be doing with public resources to help downtown development? And we'll start with Mr. Pena.
Well, I'm currently working with a number of people on an abandoned building coalition to bring back an ordinance that was in the books a number of years ago, that expired a year after it was passed, due to the fact that there wasn't anyone really taking ownership of this ordinance. And basically, it's a registry for abandoned buildings. And with that, we want to hold them accountable of either have they abandoned it, is it just vacant, or are they trying to sell it? And how can we help them? There are many credits and tax savings that are available, where we could help these property owners to bring delight to these buildings. We have a number of buildings downtown by Cheyenne residents that are vacant, and that they're not doing anything with. One of them holds her buildings as personal storage units. Another one just really doesn't have any interest in renting them out. So we need to make these people accountable for the buildings, and we need to take away the blith, and we need to make sure that we are building a vibrant downtown, as well as having every building used, and bringing up the property values. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McVeigh?
Thank you. I also think that downtown right now needs a beautification, needs a little bit of a facelift. When, when you come over the top of the viaduct, and you're looking into downtown, what have you, other than the Capitol, and looking at the depot, there's one building that stands out to me every time, and that is the Wrangler downtown, and it's beautifully painted, and the white window trim, and what have you. And that, that just catches my eye, and I think that we should have a beautification, that everybody should do something with their buildings. It doesn't necessarily have to be painted or anything else, but to make it look appealing. You know, if, if it looks appealing, I think it's going to be more apt to be rented or filled. And, you know, case in point, right now, the old Fowler's Building down there on the corner of Carrion 17th. You know, it's, it's a very viable location, it's an outstanding location, but I think it's just sitting there right now in a dormant state, and I think if we can work together, as he said, you know, to get the property owners up and responsible for their part, their properties, and to take, you know, the, the... and to take, you know, the pride to help us make downtown more appealing to people who wanna, you know, start businesses down there.
Sort of interesting, it's the old Fowler's, you really go way back.
I do, I do, I'm sorry about that.
Previous generation. So, Mr. Wan, what can or even should Cheyenne do about downtown?
Thank you. We actually had met a couple of weeks ago, as all Ward Three candidates, to talk about a lot of these issues that you're bringing up already. There's already a lot of things that we are doing, that we could still continue to do and do better. Like, it has been mentioned for the bike lanes, we have the re-ride program. I would like to see more bike racks out front of businesses because one of those issues is you can't get to downtown because there's nowhere to park. So if you replace one parking space in one block that you can park 20 bikes in, then that's 60 to 100 additional people you can get downtown without having to worry about parking. They're already doing the 17th Street lighting, they already have the depot events going on, the farmer's market. I think local businesses could leverage technology and have more of an internet presence. We have our Cheyenne City app. If they could, you know, advertise on there, then you can kinda hit one app, you can see all the events going on, you can see which businesses are having shopping specials. You know, people can YouTube, Facebook, all that other stuff and just kinda have more of that presence down there. I think there's also been an issue or a motion to bring wifi in downtown, so it's free wireless for everybody. I think that could also be appealing as well.
All right, thank you. Mr. Shogren?
As far as downtown goes, I believe the city has a limited interaction with downtown. We have a couple committees, a DDA, and a couple other downtown development communities that work with downtown every day, so it's kinda pushed off onto them. But I believe as a councilman, I believe it becomes back to my responsibility to do whatever I can to help the downtown area persevere. As far as spending additional city money on downtown, I'm a little bit taken back to not do that just because I feel like we have a lot of other issues in the city that we need to address. But with that said, I believe if we can get grants and stuff, I believe we do have to match some of the dollars and yeah, I can understand doing that. But I believe the downtown area, one of the things we have, not in the main streets of downtown, when we get further away from downtown, is kind of a, I wouldn't say filth, but kind of an old, you know, not clean feeling. So I believe we could probably enable some volunteers to go pick that up. You know, a little bit of paint, pretty cheap, goes a long way and really makes a big difference in the looks of things. You know, looks is very important to being welcoming for people coming in and visiting Cheyenne. And this is one of our biggest areas of, you know, tourism. They come in for, you know, Friday nights at the Plaza, I mean, we got tourists that come into this, so we gotta make this stuff look good for them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Latham?
In regard to downtown, I know they were doing project cleanup or something of that nature to assist in removing the bums and the drunk driving and all that going on. It seems like they've done quite a good job, the Cheyenne Police Department. They're the ones in charge of that, according to the judge when I was in the traffic court. And downtown is a very... It's a jewel. I'm glad that they moved forward with downtown at the Plaza because that was something that wasn't available when I was a younger child. We used to hang out in front of the Come and Go, or actually it was 7-Eleven, and it was Hardee's. And the police decided to implement a curfew because we had nothing to do. And years later, I'm 33 years old and would love to see something downtown... Okay, downtown has initiated a very awesome project. If they implement more into it, goals and objectives, like the gentleman said, five, 10, 15 years down the road, who knows, it could be incorporated with Frontier Days continuously throughout the year. Granddaddy of them all.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Case?
Yeah, great, thanks. This is a tough one because really, when you think about it, you're looking at personal property rights versus the common good. And if downtown is going to be a central hub of entertainment and business, how do those come together? Can we force property owners to do things? I don't know. I think a couple of steps, though, that could be taken. I think that the city should work hand in hand with the DDA and leads and perhaps the Wyoming Business Council and other financial arms in order to recruit two or three or four very solid anchors to downtown. If we get a couple of solid anchors, whether it be retail or restaurant, that, we already have a couple, we've got the Chop House, but a few more, just solid anchors that... It's kinda like if you build it, they will come, right? That's kinda how I look at it. Where else do we go? Somebody had mentioned cleanup. I think we've got a, I think we had, there would have to be ordinances put in place to do this, but I think we have a great population of laborers that don't have a whole lot else to do to help clean up downtown, and those are the inmates in the jails, right? So I think we need to incentivize property owners to occupy the buildings, but we need to be very careful in terms of stepping on personal property rights. We need to break down barriers and help in order to develop and recruit businesses.
Okay, and, yeah, wanna add something? You bet.
Yeah, two things. There are facade and capital improvement grants available for downtown businesses. As Mr. McVeigh was saying, how we need to clean up the looks of the buildings. As well as, when it comes to cleanup, we have 13 businesses that have adopted a block and they bring volunteers together to help clean up these blocks. And I'll do a small plug, my business is doing a cleanup this Monday, so if you wanna help out, let me know.
All right, does anyone else wanna have something to add at this point, or?
Gabriel, what time?
3:00 PM.
Ooh, maybe 5:00, I can do 5:00.
Okay, we'll talk.
Okay. Anyone?
I'd just like to add that, you know, and one of the pieces of my platform is planning, planning with purpose and coordination. And I think that building bridges to nowhere is probably, you know, not a good concept in terms of planning with purpose and coordination.
Okay, all righty. Well, you know, and sort of following that theme a little bit, you know, getting back to the idea of the perennial comments and complaints we hear is that regulations, codes, and fees by the city actually are impediment to development. Although, there are a lot of people who defend them and say, "We need it for orderly governance." So I guess the question is, do you see any changes? Would you champion any changes in the codes, regulations, and fees? And we'll start with Mr. McVeigh.
Thank you. Right now, the way that the code is written, what have you, I think is uniform and I think it's very workable. I think we run into some problems and some inconsistencies with differing inspectors. I think different people expect different results. And I don't think we get the continuity that we deserve out of the UDC with it being conveyed to the actual new business owner, what have you. Everything they stand for is a good thing, you know, as far as the beautification, you know, and safety. But bottom line to the whole thing is, it's got to be in the spirit of helping and abetting the business to get up and running and be a viable part of the community rather than coming in and being the fist of God, so to speak, and being a detriment to getting that up and going. So I think if we can get more continuity with the inspectors and I think if we can also work in a little more cooperation with these people, I think it would help a lot. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wan, any changes you would like to see in regulatory, regulations, fees, codes?
Somebody had mentioned in our meeting a couple of weeks ago about having a system changing it. So instead of, you know, if there's a bunch of fees or they have to do a bunch of maintenance to get their business off the ground, we would levy that over a time period of five to 10 years. I think that was actually you, Mike, if I remember correctly. So they don't have to be inundated with that right off the starting of business, so they have time to get off the ground. So I'd like to see that change being made. And then, if they get it done before schedule, maybe some kind of a re... You know, like a payback program or some kind of a rent... What's the word I'm looking for? Like a payback or like, we'll reduce your rent because you got all this done ahead of schedule, that type of thing. And just in regards to downtown, encourage business owners to promote their business on the internet or through city council websites. Let's get some of this net technology and networking to work for us so this business over here can help this business over here and you can take coupons between them and they work the exact same. So not everyone's doing isolationism. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shogren?
I believe the UDC codes need to be streamlined. I know I've talked to a lot of business owners that are starting out and they've been hit pretty hard by some of the legislation behind the UDC codes and had to actually come up with money they didn't have to open up their business. I feel like that's unfair as a councilman for me to expect that out of someone. Because I wouldn't want that to happen to me, why would I want it to happen to them? I feel the UDC codes are problematic and need to be reworked 100%. We need to go back through every code and work through them. I understand there's some safety issues there, but we need to take out the spots where our businesses get hung up. I believe we have to be, have a continuity and fairness to our codes and our fees because I've talked to a couple of business owners and they don't feel like we've been fair with them. They feel like the next-door neighbor is not having to pay a fee or not have to pay a tax that they are. And that's not right either. We have to be fair with all our business owners because, I mean, we need to have a fair system for our businesses to take off. I'm kind of embarrassed being up here talking about fairness because we are the equality state. You know, how can we expect our businesses to take off and not be fair and not be equal to them? But here I am talking about it. But, you know, there's a few things that need to be worked on and we need to persevere and get through them. And I feel like that we can do that as a council, as long as we work together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Latham, any changes you would like to see in codes, regulations, or fees?
Changes, specifically, I don't have any. More, I've attended more political events and things. So attending the council meetings will become more frequent in my future. Anyhow, I would like to see, when I tried to establish my record label in 2012, I went to the Secretary of State and filed, paid the fee, hosted a few shows, it didn't suffice. I understood it's music, there's no market here. I was running a carpet cleaning business in Georgia, cost me 45 buck... $40 with the Cobb County. I did not have to come up with a business loan. Actually, got my clients from the company that started my business, which all those clients asked if they could just go through me directly. We don't have the population in order to support that, as I found... Or, I won't say the population, I'm not Stanley Steamer, so I'm not a trusted name, I'll put it that way. Latham Home Services in a smaller community doesn't stand out like Stanley Steamer does. The Metropolis, I learned, has more of that, "Oh, well, if handyman down the road can come over, I'm gonna call him instead of the corporate." So maybe with the ordinance levels, whatever it is that's blockading those scenarios for smaller business, like the guy that drives around in his truck, work truck, fixing people's stuff, maybe they can thrive with some of the changes of the ordinance once I find out more about it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Case, any changes you'd like to see?
Yeah, I would just echo what Joe said. The UDC needs to be streamlined. It is too complex. And I feel that's why a lot of businesses that we recruit just skip over us, they go away. And Cheyenne can be a great community and attract business. We don't, we need to be more business-friendly, it needs to be more streamlined. We also need to figure out what hiccups and hang-ups are within the departments so that city departments can collaborate, work together, and streamline processes for new businesses. It's too complex. And like I said before, one of the things that I'm working on is what does it take? If I was to break ground on a business, by purchase and break ground on business, to the time I open, what does the city require? And I'm finding that it's a pretty complex process. We need to get rid of those barriers.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pena?
When the city administrator vote came on, I was given a study from IBM to read about why I should vote for the city administrator. And one of the articles in that study was that the mayor of Atlanta brought on a consultant to review and update the codes to become more effective. And that's exactly what she did, helped to streamline the processes and helped save the city some money. And it was at that point where I decided that this is something that I wanted to do is run for city council at that time. And one of the things I wanna do when elected is to start going through these codes and updating them, deleting them, and revising them for what we need today in 2012 or 2016 and what's gonna be affected in the future. As well as talking about the UDC codes, they're suggested codes that are uniform throughout the nation. We need to amend them to fit our city. Just like the fire suppressant that was voted down a couple of weeks ago, that they, according to the code, that every fourplex was supposed to have fire sprinklers. Well, it doesn't fit Cheyenne. So the city council did the right thing by voting that down and striking that from that code. So something that we need to do is look at what's gonna fit Cheyenne and not the nation.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone wanna add or comment further on that? Okay, oh, sure. Mr. Wan?
With the streamline of UDC codes and attracting businesses, I wonder if it would be helpful to us as a city council to have a checklist that businesses can easily read and go through of sections of the UDC code that they need to pay attention to when starting a business or expanding a business so they can make sure that they have those things done and they could help them do their project timeline?
Okay.
I agree with that.
Did you wanna add anything?
Yeah, I agree with Tom on that one. But moreover, I would like to actually make it to where we don't put these roadblocks in front of our businesses. We have to destroy our walls, not build them. We have to be open to new businesses because I'm tired of not getting my, you know, specialty foods that I like eating because they don't wanna come to Cheyenne because they have to spend X amount of dollars to do this. I mean, I kinda like Chinese food. I like to get some other Chinese restaurants in here, but they're not gonna come with the UDC the way they are. It's embarrassing to my Chinese food.
Okay, okay, folks, those of you who have an interest in Chinese food restaurants, I think you have a... There you go.
Pro-Chinese food.
Anybody else want to?
One quick, yeah. I haven't had a whole lot of understanding with businesses and stuff trying to come here. But I know some businesses, like, may be too big for a small town. Some may bring the wrong attraction, like me and my rap music. So we need to stick to what is relevant, the necessities for us to grow properly and not became an out-of-control metropolis.
Okay, did you wanna add something there?
Yeah, I know the fire department will work with property owners to help get them in and show them what needs to be done. I'm gonna take the Paramount Building. They went in, they got it done, they worked a lot of hours to get it done. But within nine months, they had it renovated and up and running, going whatever small hoops that they had to go through, and I spoke with the property owner and there weren't a lot of hoops that they had to go through to make sure that it was done. It was just communication and a lot of hard work and dedication.
Okay, well, I'm going to sort of segue a little bit into... Let me see, there's so many, so many questions here. But, okay, one of the big, I acknowledge it's sort of the big issue in the middle of the table, which is declining sales tax revenue, which really is a great engine for our... which is declining sales tax revenue, which really is a great engine for our, our estate or for our city budget. And they, um, probably the legislature is not gonna be able to help cities, towns, and counties out because they're suffering from even a more dire straits. So, so the priorities are gonna get tougher. Uh, we all hear about potholes and road construction. So, um, we all know that's right up there, kind of on the top. So what do we do with priorities and, you know, uh, that are maybe less, um, you know, nuts and bolts and maybe more like amenities? Do those get simply by the wayside, historic preservation, bicycle paths? Or, um, do you try to keep that in the mix of priorities? And we'll start with Mr. Wan.
Thank you. The problem with us being so close to Colorado is people say there's not enough to do in this town. So on the weekends, they leave. And I think it's because they don't have access to the resources or they don't research the resources that we do have. We have a, so many recreational things to do. I think we have three frisbee disc golf courses in town. We have a greenway with over twenty miles of track. We have Kurt Goudy twenty-four miles away with thirty miles of mountain bike trails, camping, full-blown boating. But people don't realize that there because it's not being promoted enough. And I think if we can have more events sponsored around those key areas, then we can encourage people to stay here on the weekends, spend their money here, which is what we want them to do, which can then fund all these projects and initiatives that we have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shogren.
Can you repeat the question one more time?
Sure, and it's, it has to do with the shrinking, um, tightening budgets with, uh, less, um, sales tax revenue and, uh, the prospects of having a lot less help from the state than, than we used to have. And so the priorities, you know, infrastructure is, is sort of an obvious thing. But what do we do about those other things like historic preservation, bicycle paths? The, the, um, the amenities, I guess, for lack of a better word. Uh, do those just get put on this, uh, the side? Or do we, where does that come in the priorities now that times are tight?
Well, you know, if you don't have money to pay for something, you can't really pay for it. You know, we have to set our priorities. And I mean, of course, potholes and infrastructure is one of our main priorities because, I mean, I've lived here for six years and I think I've changed out a full set of tires every year I've been here. And I've changed three sets of shocks because our roads are, have a lot of potholes. They're in bad shape. So priorities, we have to set our priorities straight. We have to make sure our city employees are taken care of. We have to make sure our safety issues are taken care of. And then, you know, the amenities, like, you know, the extras can come. But we have to plan for our extras. We're in kind of a dire need with our, you know, tax revenue statewide and I understand that. But we need to think about what our priorities are. We need to come together as a group of citizens, which is Cheyenne, and come together and figure out what we need to come forward with first. And being on council, that's something I am a hundred percent for, the hearing my citizens, what they would like to see and working with them. But our priorities are our needs first, then our wants. It's kind of like a house budget. You know, I want a new boat, but I can't afford it. So I'm going to just make sure that I, you know, feed my kids, keep a roof over their head. Same deal with the city. And eventually, if I plan correctly, I'll get my new boat, maybe.
All righty, thank you. Mr. Latham, the mix of priorities, uh, the, uh, the hard things and the, uh, the amenities, how do they fall for you?
Um, amenities, they're important because, like it was mentioned, we do have, um, resources here. Like the ICN event center, uh, in regard to the rec center. I know a lot of people don't find what the ICN event center is as extravagant enough for them, I guess, the caliber. And also when, uh, Mr. Byrd tried to, or actually he hosted Tech 9 Come Here. Um, that was a loo- uh, troubling situation, which is why people wanted a rec center that was structured for that purpose with other amenities in it to cover that. Um, I get too involved in a rec center, but the necessities, the priorities are family-oriented safety. When you just, when I, I'll discuss homeland security, emergency management. Um, in two thousand nine, they tried to, the goal was to implement the program in all fifty states. And when I concluded my final for this last semester, that's why I was asking what our struck, our status in the city was. They're working on that? That would be one. Because we don't have any disasters to come, but that's a government entity. It's a young one and the goal was all fifty states have emergency management. We're part of the fifty states. I think that'd be a good thing. Maybe a Dave and Buster's also is what I was told about.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Case?
Yeah, anytime there are budget cuts, you need to figure out how to do more with less. Plain and simple. You're either going to reduce services or increase revenues or find some balance. And public safety and infrastructure are absolutely number one priorities. Infrastructure starts falling apart and then, you know, you kind of have a domino effect. So those are number one. However, I don't, I think it's important that we don't, we, we need to build a long-term vision for this community and not lose sight of that. Um, you talk about historic preservation. I think we need to find a common ground where we can have historic preservation with, um, bringing modernity, if you will, to downtown and developing it. How many, how many more tax dollars can we get if we develop downtown and we get some businesses going there that can re, you know, replace that revenue that's been lost, right? So just because we're losing revenue, we cannot stop and, and, and say, okay, we just need to put everything on hold or we're gonna continue to have dilapidated buildings downtown. And we're gonna continue to have, you know, uh, other things that just need fixed. We need to incorporate it all together and look at it in a long-term vision.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pena.
Well, I have a third hindrance that's, that's gonna hurt us next year. You talked about declining sales tax and declining state monies. Well, the city council was, um, I, I would say backed into a corner on approving a two and a half percent, uh, pay increase to, to the employees, which they had to take out of their reserves, which is gonna hurt the, uh, budget for next year. And the other thing that's gonna hurt is, um, the firefighter, uh, contract is up next year. But your money, they're gonna want their two and a half percent as well. Since everyone else across the board got theirs. So, uh, that is gonna be an added, uh, expense that is not in the current budget. That is gonna hurt, uh, the city, um, a lot more next year. So unfortunately, there are gonna be cuts. And you're gonna have to figure out how you're gonna, uh, move things around to make this, uh, two and a half percent increase for, uh, all the employees as well as whatever the union, the firefighter union's gonna want, uh, next year. So, um, as a, uh, I own a, an accounting business. So as my background in budgeting and finance, uh, that's one of those things I'll be working with, uh, Lois and, and to make sure that we're working together and, and making sure all the departments are taken care of. But we're gonna have to take a hard look at, uh, what's gonna be on the budget for next year.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McVeigh?
Thank you. Yes, uh, we are going to have a very tough time. Not only are the sales tax going to be bottoming out, but also the severance tax and everything that comes from the minerals and, uh, you know, the oil and gas industries right now are all hurting. The overall, overall tax picture for, for the state of Wyoming and for us is going to be rather dim. So I'm, I'm one that I don't like to say the word cut. I'd like to say that we do a little bit more efficiently and, uh, look at things to tighten the budget, run more efficiently and to do things that, um, where, where we get more for less, get more bang for the buck, so to speak. I don't know how much of that's going to be humanly possible with the kind of cuts that they're talking about. But the realism of the whole thing is we do have to buckle down. We are going to have to get serious about the thing. And we're going to have to understand the fact that for us to reach tomorrow, we're gonna have to do some changing today. And we're gonna have to operate in such a way. Um, and, and what, what Mr., uh, I'm sorry. Mr. Pena was just saying, uh, yeah, I, I wondered about the two and a half percent increase also and then pulling it out of the city reserves. And yes, that is gonna open up a can of worms this next year when, you know, these other, when the fire department wants theirs, you know, their upcomings too. So we do have some serious things to look for. Thank you.
Okay, does, uh, anyone else want to address the issue of priorities or, um, any other part of the budget? Okay, um, Mr. Wan?
Thank you. Uh, the scary part that I can see potentially happening that, let me try that again. The scary part I can see potentially happening would be we get again backed into a corner. We're having to tap into reserves and then we have to make a radical decision to how to bring venue in, like for instance, legalizing weed. For the state of Colorado, it became a billion-dollar industry in a year. And that is something that Wyoming itself needs desperately. But I, I would like that decision to be planned, implemented, regulated before it happens and not just, we can do this because Colorado did it. I would still like to see it happen, but I don't want it to be a forced thing to happen.
Okay, and let's see, well, Mr. Latham has his hand up and then, Mr. Case?
I'll be brief. Um, in regard to, uh, some of the necessary necessities, um, the police department did mention their competition is front range. Um, trying to compete with a fifty thousand dollar starting salary and also keeping long-term, uh, officers quality. You know, I mean, getting them in the door is one thing, but keeping them there. Um, another one slipped my mind just that quick. I guess I won't hold you up any longer.
Well, you know what, for the closing, if you want, if something, uh, you know, then you'll be able to address it there. So, um, Mr. Case, did you want to add something?
Yeah, just real quick. I think anytime, um, that you, uh, fund long-term projects with, uh, reserves, if you will, or savings. I mean, if you ran a household that way, you can't borrow from your credit card all day long and expect things to turn out well. Um, I think that was a poor decision. And, um, you hit, uh, Latham, Mr. Latham just hit one on the head too. And that is, really, we need to look at that. Cheyenne is a proving grounds for a host of other communities when it comes to training people. We train them and then they go away. Something to look at.
Does anyone want to, uh, yes, Mr. Shogren?
Uh, you know, Rocky kind of touched on when we was talking earlier. You know, and we're worried about prioritizing our, you know, we have to prioritize to keep our taxes in line. But we also need to worry about diversifying our tax base. You know, we need to bring in the employers that'll actually pay our citizens a higher wage. We need to attract the businesses that will give us a higher wage. So when our citizens get a higher wage, our tax revenue grows. I mean, they're directly correlated. So we can start working on that and start planning for our future that way. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, did you want to, okay, very quickly?
Um, now, in regard to the marijuana, um, I chose not to make that a part of my proposal or anything like that objectives. Cause I was a part of that originally when it was Weed Wyoming and met with Chief Kazzard and the First impairment. And I was very knowledgeable. I may have rubbed him wrong because I was knowledgeable. But that's why I won't take my stance, but it is profitable. But very long road to be ironed out.
Very good. All right, well, um, and so we have, you know, the, the evening has really sped by. I really appreciate all your thoughtful comments. Um, I have, uh, one more. I've been asking all the candidates for all city offices. Um, and we'll start with Mr. Shogren, uh, this time. And, uh, it's, uh, would you support a non-discrimination ordinance?
Would I support a non-discrimination ordinance? Yes, and I, of course, am against discrimination. Yes, I would support a non-discrimination ordinance to a point of not conflicting with the, with the United States government. I feel like if we go and push the forefront and become the first ones to adopt a non-discrimination ordinance, that when the federals, the feds come in and make their own non-discrimination ordinance, we might be in conflict with them and open ourselves up for a lawsuit. So yes, I am for supporting a non-discrimination ordinance. But it would have to be worded correctly to not interfere with the federal established non-discrimination ordinance that's already established. Or the states, for that matter. Because we are the city government, we're pretty much third in pecking order. So we can't really jump up and take precedence above the other two. If we do that, we're kind of asking for either a lawsuit or a court fight. So we gotta be careful. It's a very tread water style situation. But I'm a hundred percent against discrimination. And I'm, uh, you know, I basically would want to tread carefully on that water with, uh, the legislations that could conflict with each other.
Right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Latham, non-discrimination ordinance, would, would you support something like that?
I do support it, um, definitely for equality, um, whether male, female, black, white, transgender, it, it, we're all humans. Um, I've experienced it with a close family member. I won't identify the person specifically. But a homosexual is in my family and you're still a human to me. Um, I'm not trying to be a city council for the thousand dollars a month. Um, I make enough to pay my bills and blow extra. So anyways, a thousand dollars a month isn't gonna be, I don't, I, I, I don't make a whole lot. I'm probably the lowest paid individual sitting right here. But the thousand dollars isn't worth me making a mockery of myself. Moving along, um.
Okay, we can leave it at that. You'll have a chance if you want to think of, have another thought. Mr. Case?
Yeah, so, um, I mean, this is a very complex issue that we're dealing with. Um, and I believe that the EOC, federal laws and state laws are very, very clear. And I believe that they cover, um, the issues. And I believe that anybody that would have a grievance already has the channels to explore that. That said, I think that any hiring manager that practices discrimination should be dealt with swiftly and accordingly. In other words, here's the door, right? Um, so, yes, I am perfectly fine with an umbrella policy that says we're not going to discriminate based on any issue whatsoever. You're hired to do a job based on your skill set. That said, I really believe that the federal government and state laws already have things in place for people to air their grievances and solve them.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pena.
The Cheyenne Police Department is currently putting together a revision of their harassment policy. And then it says based, or person based on that person's race, religion, gender, sexual orientation, nationality, ancestry, age, disability, political ideology, and that of their family members, friends, and associates. They, they pretty much hit every corner. And I read the draft of the, um, discrimination ordinance that was, um, a draft and hasn't, uh, made its way to the dais. But I had some issues with that draft. And one of them was it was specific for one class. Uh, discrimination policy needs to be, uh, for all classes. Uh, there should be no discrimination, period. Uh, unfortunately, there is every day. The second thing I had a problem with that was how, uh, the penalties and, and coming up with uh, who was going to be the person in charge of determining if it was discrimination or not. And that really needs to be looked at on how they're gonna do it. So, um, I would support one as long as, uh, we're protecting all classes. And, um, I would have to really see how they're gonna define, how they figure out who is gonna be responsible for determining if it's discrimination or not.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McVeigh?
Thank you. If, uh, anti-discrimination ordinance was brought to me and what have you, I would, I would vote yes in support of it. Um, I'm totally against discrimination of any sort. But on the other hand, I agree with what Mr. Case just said in the federal and state laws, I believe are already covered as far as the anti-discrimination in general is always concerned. I don't know why we would want to spec, you know, make a specific list for the city of Cheyenne for anti-discrimination, but I'm always hoping to, you know, my ears are open all the time and I do listen. So if it was brought to my attention that we are, uh, going to go forth with an anti disgra- So, if it was brought to my attention that we are going to go forth with an anti-discrimination law, I would be all for it because I am against discrimination of any sort. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wan?
I would also agree to an anti-discrimination ordinance and like Mr. Pena and Rocky both said, as long as it leaves no room for any kind of discrimination and we have all classes protected because, like Mr. Waddle from Ward 2 said, we live in an age of society now where that even shouldn't even be an issue. It shouldn't even be a requirement for law at this point. Everybody should be able to treat each other with respect. So, I don't think it should be an issue, but if it did come through, I would approve it.
Okay. Does anyone want to add anything further at this point? Then we may be ready for our...oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to add something or...
Well...
You looked like you were...you had something on your mind.
Discrimination isn't just, you know, on gender-based or not. I mean, from harassment to just anything. It should be taken seriously. I mean, from the workplace to the community, all be understanding of how serious and important non- or anti-discrimination is. Some people take it lightheartedly. I mean, there's a lot of bells and whistles you can add to that ordinance specifically to make it work, but hands down, we're the equality state.
All right. Thank you. So, I get...oh, yeah, sure.
And I, too, would also like to say, yes, I am very proud to say that we are from the equality state and I'm very proud also to say that I'm from Cheyenne, Wyoming, and I have friends of every gender and race and what have you and I'm proud of that. And I'm proud to be from a place where everybody is treated with equality. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Then I think we'll move into our closing comments and just like with the last round and in our round robin fashion, we close at the same...with the...starting with the same person as last time. So, I'll let you decide as I did with Mr. Shaner. Do you want to go ahead and do your closing now or pass the baton to Mr. Case?
I don't mind. Does it go right ahead?
All right. Go ahead and sure. You have a minute and a half.
All right. My closing statement is whether I win or lose the campaign, my objective is to establish something for the youth. That way, they don't suffer the inequities that I myself did. I'll throw myself out there. You can go to the county or the police department, pull up everything you find. I know what it says. I know what's true. I know what's not. Why? Because it was me. I would love to see more children, especially my daughter, whether I'm here or not, have the opportunity to avoid that path, that avenue. I mean, we have the skate parks. If we can get things afloat more appropriately, for whatever reason, it's not at the ICN Event Center, that would be awesome. I know they have laser tag and stuff like that, but, I mean, for the older folks, it's pretty well-established as we are the retirement state. Great state.
Alrighty. Okay.
Dominic Latham?
Mr. Case, you're a minute and a half to close. Sum it up and, you know, if you hear the buzzer go off, go ahead and, you know, finish your thought, please.
Yeah, great. No, and again, I thank you guys for putting this together. This has been a great forum. I think I bring a lot of things to the table in terms of preparation and analytics and leadership and management. Kind of like, I guess I put it this way, I'm out there in the field in my personal job, day-to-day, and I'm everything from the receptionist to the CEO in my territory. So, I've got to be, you know, functioning on all cylinders throughout the organization, if you will. I think I bring a unique lens to the city council because of that experience of working for multinational corporations. And, gosh, I don't know what else. I think it's just very important for this community to select a leadership team that's going to create a long-term vision for Cheyenne so that when my daughter, for instance, who is two years old, isn't looking back and saying, "Boy, this community sure looks an awful lot like it did 20 years ago," like I do. And that's a very big concern that I have. So, I think I bring a lot to the table. I think I'm a strong candidate and I would appreciate your consideration for City Council Ward 3.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Pena?
Thank you for putting this together and allowing us to have the time to really talk about the issues and give our two cents on what we feel about those issues. I've been attending the city council meetings for over a year now, sitting in the back, just listening, observing. I do come up and speak about some of the issues that are important to me. In fact, I believe I've spoken more than one of the incumbents that is running. Unfortunately, he's not here tonight. I want to represent the city and be a voice for the citizens, not just Ward 3, but all of Cheyenne. As a self-employed person, I've made it available where I can meet with people during the week on...as well as on weekends to be able to hear their concerns and their issues. I want to be able to help the city get to the next level and really help us get over this hump that we're going to have to go through with the budget in the next year to five years because we are going to have some issues with that. I believe with my background in human resources and accounting that I could help with not only the budget, but also with bringing the city ordinances to make it more efficient for our city. I want to work with the employees, with the citizens, and be that voice. You can follow me on Facebook at Gabriel Pena for Cheyenne Ward 3 City Council. I'm not raising any money. I'm not putting up any signs. If you want to support me, I have a list of nonprofit organizations that you can support instead. Put the money where it's needed and not to bring more strife to the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. McVeigh?
Thank you. I've never run for any office before. I've been a lifelong citizen of Cheyenne and I guess I sat on the sidelines long enough. And I just thought that this year would be a good year to jump in with both feet and give it my best shot. I believe I'd be a good candidate. I am a good candidate for this and I think I'd do a good job as a city councilman for Ward 3. I'm a small business owner myself here in town and, like I said, my degree is in economics and what have you and I think that I could put that to use as far as some of the issues we're going to be coming up against here in the not-too-distant future. But I would love to be the, you know, the candidate chosen for Ward 3 and I would like to work with all these guys and keep them all close to hand, too, because they have some great ideas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wan?
Thank you. Like Mr. Pena, I'm also not raising any money for my campaign. My Facebook page is Tom Wan, You Are No Hero on Facebook.com. Along with trying to find ways to manage the budget, I'd like to also encourage, you know, healthy living as younger, when you're younger, alternate transportation around the city since we have such expansive greenway that can help alleviate pothole issues, that can alleviate congestion issues. I also like to further facilitate open, honest communication and transparency with our city government between citizens and council members ourselves with the, you know, structure of having a plan in place for what we're going to do for the next five, 10, 15 years so that it is accessible for the entire city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shogren?
Again, my name's Joe Shogren. I'd like to give a shout-out to the other guys that are here. I really appreciate you guys running. I really appreciate why you guys are here and I really appreciate your heart for our great city. And win or lose, I want to help each and every one of you guys work towards a greater city. I'm not a business owner, so I feel like I'd help equal out the playing field for our local businesses. I feel that I'd have an objective approach, sitting on council. I'm a blue-collar, hard-working man. I'm a father and I would enjoy working on council. And unlike a few of my fellow candidates, I've dumped a lot of money into my campaign, a lot of my own money because it's important to me. You know, I need to get my name out there. I need to, you know, get the people to understand that I'm there to serve them. I'm under...I'm there to be their mouthpiece on the city council. My job is nothing less than being their mouthpiece and being their right hand. If they have a concern, they come to me and I'll work for them. That's my job. You know, that's my biggest objective in city council and I'd like to get that done. So, please give me a call at 307-630-8342. You can give me a text, too, or you can friend me on Facebook. My name's Joe Shogren and I'd love to have new friends. You can never have too many friends, I promise. All right.
Okay. Well, thank you and I...in all the thank-yous that go along, of course, I thank the candidates. Thank Charter Communications for their huge help in recording and making these available. Again, tonight's forums will be available on 11:00 a.m. on Sunday starting July 24th. So, share that on your Facebook pages with everyone. And also, the Wyoming Tribune Eagle is a cosponsor of these with their publicity they're offering. Thanks to the League of Women Voters, all the help that's been put into this. And, you know, let's give these candidates a round of applause to thank them. And remember, be informed and vote. Thank you very much and good night.